So as you can see, I am filling in for Sean tonight. Sean and Todd will both be here virtually. Are the screens on, Joe? Okay, so we should see them up there also, right? Only here? Okay, all right. And look at this. And Terri Malor, she is excused. She will not be here tonight. So she is excused from tonight's meeting. So we need to make an approval of the agenda. But prior to that, we'd like to remove 2.02 and 5.04 for later time and add 8.01, Arcadia High School Eagle Scout Project to 1.06 after Student Leader Comments. Can I get a motion? Thank you, Mark. And thank you, Jordan. All in favor? Okay, perfect. Thank you, friends. So as of right now, we would like to welcome the Athena Middle School students to the podium so we can hear all about you. Thank you.
Hello, we're the crew of the Athena Middle School Trojan TV. The Vision of Athena Middle School Trojan TV. In May 2024, the idea was presented to Mr. Ferguson by current eighth grader, myself, Jack Scottney. Our goal was to provide an exciting platform for students to present, build confidence, and strengthen communication skills. Trojan TV was also designed to celebrate student talent and highlight the amazing things happening at our school.
Bringing the Vision to Life. On September 5th, 2024, our first episode aired with just a laptop and two people. Today, we use OBS software with a camera, microphone, green screen, and an introduction, and credits created by seventh grader Declan Morris. We have trained student anchors conducting Leader and Me lessons every day. Currently, we have a team of over 10 people contributing to this success. When Mr. Wallenhorst became principal in February, he immediately supported and contributed to the expansion of Trojan TV. We are proud of what we have accomplished this year.
There are a lot of behind the scenes backgrounds and scripts that happened. Here's a brief glimpse of our morning show.
Good morning, Athena Middle School. Today is Monday, March 31st, a day A for students. Quote of the day: Earn trust, earn trust, earn trust. Then you can worry about the rest. Seth Gaten.
Just a reminder after school activities, students are not only allowed to stay after school if involved with an extracurricular program. In addition, students in grades six to eight are not allowed to attend a sporting event unless supervised by their parent guardian, who needs to be in attendance the entire time.
Mrs. Mullin, my mom, has been working on a hygiene drive donation box for our students and is looking for more donations. She has been creating hygiene care bags and are requesting donations of deodorant, shampoo, conditioner, soap, or body wash, toothbrushes, toothpaste, hand sanitizer, and chapstick. Donations can be dropped off in Ms. Welch's room.
Today marks the first day of spring sports. Good luck to our Athena Sports Teams today. Sports offered in middle school: baseball, softball, track and field, girls' flag football, boys' tennis, and lacrosse. Leader and Me. Here's our Leader and Me focus for the week. Did you know that emotions, even unpredictable ones, are totally normal? But when we feel overwhelmed, we can use self-regulation to help ourselves feel better and stay in control.
Inside our brain, we have a really important part called the prefrontal cortex. It's like the wise leader of our brain. It helps us make good choices and solve problems and stay calm.
But sometimes our brain goes into fight, fight, or freeze mode when we feel scared, angry, or stressed. That's when our emotions take over and it's harder for our prefrontal cortex to help.
So how do we get back to our focus state?
We can use self-regulation strategies. Here are a few. Breathe. Take deep breaths. Pretend to smell a flower and then blow out a candle. Use your senses. Count how many green things you can see. Take a break. Count to 10 slowly. Move. Take a short walk. Connect. Talk to a trusted adult or friend.
These strategies can help calm our brain and bring us back to focus so we can think clearly again.
Remember, your brain is powerful and you can train it to stay calm and focused, even in tough moments.
Thank you, everyone. As always, please make...
We start each broadcast out with a positive quote of the day.
For the month of April, we replaced our positive quote of the day with a joke of the day.
Daily, we announce sports teams' accomplishments and upcoming games to watch.
We started Leader and Me in January 2025. Each week, we focus on a new habit of the seven habits of highly effective people. Each week, we have a routine of what we have each homeroom do.
Mondays are the day we introduce the theme of the week. This week's is Think, Win, Win, Habit Four.
Tuesdays are Tell Me Tuesday, where we, on the morning show, instruct the students to open their My Learning and write in their journal connected to the Leader and Me lesson impromptu.
Wednesdays, I wonder Wednesday. On Wednesdays, students have a class discussion on the topic of the week.
Thursday is Throwback Thursday. We give the students another day to finish their journal entry from Tuesday in My Learning.
Friday is a whole-class discussion or bring home the topic to your family and make a family connection to what you've learned in Leader and Me lessons this week.
In conclusion, we love doing the morning show at Athena Middle School and will continue to make changes. Tune into our Trojan TV and please subscribe. We hope to bring this to the high school next year. Thank you.
That was wonderful. Could you come up here so we can take a picture? Thank you. Now, we'd like to take a moment to recognize Josh Wood regarding his Arcadia High School Eagle Scout Project. I'd like to ask people to, someone to please bring this to the table. Make a motion. Mary, or that was Jordan, and second, Mark. Thank you. Any questions? Anything you want to talk about regarding Josh's Eagle Scout Project?
I just think it's wonderful.
Mary?
I think it's absolutely wonderful, and thank you. And maybe you could be encouraged to start a construction company and then do some of the work for the district because we always have a lot, don't we, Romeo?
Yes, we do. Okay. Mark?
Yeah, I'd like to say congratulations. It's great, great work. I know that's a really challenging task to achieve Eagle. So, good job.
Your perseverance has reached its moment. So could we take a vote, please, on approving this? Motion? Didn't we already do a motion? Oh, Sean has his hand up. Okay, thanks. Could we take a vote, please? All in favor? All in favor? So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Awesome, thank you. Josh, would you come up so we can take a picture?
Tracy, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, Todd.
I just wanted to say congratulations to Josh on this project as well. I don't know if he is still raising money to complete the project, but if he is, I would hope that he could share his GoFundMe link with the board. And I'm sure many of us would be happy to make a contribution to support this work. I'm a proud former Boy Scout myself. I never made it to Eagle, but I'm really happy to have the chance to support Josh if he's still raising money.
Thank you, Todd. Sean, did you have something you wanted to say? Are you good? Okay, thank you. So you're gonna...
He's just starting his fundraising, so we will share the link with assistant president.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Good night. Okay, so we're going to move into staffing. Can somebody move staffing to the table, please? Bill? And second is Jordan. Thank you. Okay, now any questions? Any questions about any of the staffing? Okay, so seeing no questions, let's take a vote. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. All right, thank you, everybody. Okay, so we move that. Okay, now we are moving over to the 25-26 budget presentation. And Deputy Smoline, could you... Superintendent?
I just got demoted.
I mean, I don't even know where deputy came from because I never used to say it before. So Superintendent Smoline.
Mark, looks like you're on, buddy. Good evening. So again, tonight, Romeo and I will walk you through the 2025-26 budget proposal. We'll highlight how this plan supports student achievement, reflects our community's input, and balances students' needs with fiscal responsibility. You will hear about our development process, key financial components, the two ballot propositions, and changes to the voting process. So we hope that this gives both the Board of Education and the community a clear understanding of what we're proposing and why. And as I mentioned last week, again, I just would like to recognize Romeo and the entire finance department. Budgeting in a district our size is complex, and I'm deeply grateful to Romeo, Janine, Megan, and the entire team for keeping students at the center of every financial decision. So thank you both, or thank you all. So as shown here, we follow, it's a five-step process that's been in place for over a decade, and it really never ends. It's a continual process. Romeo and his team start this process by analyzing our revenues, including state aid, reserve funds, fund balance, and the tax levy, determine if we're facing a surplus or a gap. This process is ongoing and continuously refined as needs emerge. So at the outset of this process, we identify key priorities, or our key priorities. And this year, we focused on maintaining and enhancing current programs to address our achievement gaps as well as promote acceleration and enrichment, fostering school safety, wellness, and social-emotional learning, expanding learning and extracurricular opportunities, and empowering our staff through professional learning communities. These priorities were shaped by student, staff, and family feedback and aim to create a safe, engaging, safe and engaging schools that our students deserve. As I mentioned before, I am now three months into this role and deep into an entry process that's focused on listening, learning, and leading. The cabinet and I have engaged with hundreds of stakeholders and used their input, combined with student data, to shape the proposal you'll see here tonight. From thousands of voices across the Greece Central School District, including students, staff, families, and community members, six clear themes emerged during this process. Students' needs have changed. Student behaviors affect learning. Staffing shortages impact everyone. Prioritizing rigor and achievement. Ensuring students are ready for life after graduation and that families want to be engaged as partners. So today, we serve fewer students than we have throughout the years, but their needs are far greater. Since 2020-21, we've seen increases in English language learners, increased students with disabilities, students experiencing homelessness, and those qualifying for free and reduced meals. These demographic shifts directly influence our resource planning. Our budget proposal aligns with our Reach 2027 Strategic Plan and its commitments of ignite learning, cultivate trust, and expand opportunity. This budget reflects how these principles come to life in classrooms and school communities across Greece. For commitment one, we are investing $135.7 million to improve the academic outcomes in the following selected initiatives and priorities. Curriculum implementation and professional learning for educators. Targeted supports to close gaps in ELA in math, including reallocation of district toses as school-based interventionists. Expansion of early childhood programs, STEM specials in elementary schools, and increase UPK capacity and more college credit courses and CTE pathways. Strong mental health support via counselors, social workers, and behavior interventionists plus partnerships like Genesee Mental Health and Primary Project. Special education continues to be a growing area of need in Greece. We now are at 78 self-contained classrooms district-wide, and I believe that that number has actually gone up to close to 81 since the last time I've done this presentation. 162 students requiring one-to-one aids. A 42% increase in occupational, physical therapy, and speech needs since 2019-20. A 25% increase in students requiring behavioral support on IEPs. And with all of that, fewer out-of-district placements and increasing demand for in-district services. Cultivating trust. We're investing $9.3 million to strengthen relationships and learning in the learning environment in the following initiatives and priorities. Safety enhancements like weapons detection systems and cybersecurity upgrades. Restorative programs and accountability structures like PAC and social learning specialists. Shared decision-making teams with students, parents, and community members. Recruitment and retention strategies, including stipends to compensate teachers that host student teachers and build strong relationships with new and upcoming teachers. And additionally, supporting new pilot programs at Olympia and Arcadia with an increased school allocations. This budget directly addresses feedback throughout my entry process, perception surveys, and from the voices of our stakeholders. We've built in resources to meet concerns around student behavior, special education, academic achievement, and life skills instruction. For Goal Three, we're investing $11.6 million in expanding community school strategy with two new sites. More academic and behavioral support programs, extracurricular opportunities and the expansion of a variety of after-school clubs, work-based learning experiences and tools like Maya Learning, and integrated technology instruction that empowers students to think critically, communicate effectively, and use digital tools responsibly. This snapshot demonstrates the number of students that have engaged in the new opportunities offered to our students beyond the school day. Last year, we had 3,500 students register to receive free district-provided summer programs. More than 700 students participated in the RBTL's Art Partnership Program. And we have had students from across the district organize and lead dozens of school-based and community events, including the First Greece to Change Summit for secondary students and the Leadership Day for elementary students. At this point, I'm going to ask Romeo to come up and share the financial overview.
Good evening, everyone. Before we begin, I'm here tonight again just to let you know what the budget looks like. We won't spend a lot of time on the slides. The numbers have not changed since the last couple of times we have viewed this. As of today, we still do not have a state-approved budget. That's still pending. So our numbers have remained the same for the last two board meetings that we've come here. Couple items just to note upfront. We have been looking at some of the anticipated changes that we think we may see on our budget runs. One is a foundation aid adjustment for about 10 kids in enrollment. So we may see a slight decrease due to that for foundation aid. We're understanding that the governor is using a slightly lower CPI, Consumer Price Index, in the formula, which may result in a little bit less funding on the foundation aid as well. We're expecting that to be somewhere between $150,000 or $200,000 less than where we are currently. In addition to that, though, to offset that, our BOSI's aid is likely to be up. We spent a lot more money in BOSI's at the end of last year, which is generating aid for next year that wasn't picked up in the governor's run. That's going to be somewhere probably between $800,000 and $900,000. So our anticipation is that the budget should, the budget state aid should go up $500,000 or $600,000 in that range when we do get the final numbers for that. In the meantime, if it doesn't go that way, then we're good at where we are. If it, in one way or another, we'll absorb into the budget whatever comes out of the legislative budget. We're prepared to do that. Looking at the revenues, our budget is going from $307.8 million to $318.5, an increase of $10.7 million, or just under 3.5%. CPI for this year was around 3, 3.1%. So we're glad to be within that range. The state aid number, again, has been locked in for a little bit here since there is no state-approved budget. The tax levy at $128 million. That is 2.6%, 2.06% increase. That is the maximum tax levy we can go to and obtain 50% plus one vote to approve the budget. Anything above that would require a supermajority or 60% resident vote to approve. And then the other item I just wanted to touch on was the $2 million in appropriated fund balance. In the current year, 24-25, we appropriated $2 million for five playgrounds and a couple of pavilions that will be built this summer. That money is going back into the fund balance. We're not doing that again for the 25-26 budget. That's why you see a decrease of $2 million there. On the expense side, we look at this in a couple of ways. One is by function. Again, just to point a couple of observations. Instruction and pupil transportation make up almost 60% of our budget, which it should. And again, without going into the details, up about $10.7, $10.8 million, or just under 3.5%. When we look at the budget by object code, as we refer to it, salaries, equipment, contract services, you'll see that salaries are up $5.8 million. That's roughly 4%, which it goes along with the contracts that we have for all our bargaining units. In summary, the operating budget is proposed at $318,529,556. It's up $10.7 million, or just under 3.5%. 3.49%. The estimated tax levy is $128,728. That's up $2,590,581, or just over 2%. This year, there's, as in many years or previous years, a proposition for a bus replacement. We are looking to replace 35 buses. It's broken down, as you can see on the screen. Those will be gas and diesel buses. We have not moved on the electric bus endeavor at this point yet. The estimated cost, aggregate cost, will be about $5.6 million. We're looking to use $1.89 million from the bus reserve. We'll finance these buses over five years, starting in 25-26. And as a result of the state aid and the amount we're pulling out of the reserve, there's no additional cost to the levy for residents to have to pay. A new proposition for this year is Proposition Two to establish a capital reserve fund. A capital reserve fund, this is a building fund. It's used, we use it to pay for our capital projects, which we have every year. We're proposing to create a capital reserve fund for $50 million plus accumulated interest. We're proposing that we are able to deposit funds into that account over a 15-year period. And then anytime we use those monies, we would come back to the board and to the residents for a vote in order to utilize the funds for a capital project. One of the things I did want to mention here is there's still a lot of work to be done in the buildings that we couldn't accommodate in the Level Up project. We spent a lot of time doing walkthroughs and soliciting input from administrators in the buildings and folks in the building that created or came up with ideas that need to be done in the buildings. be done in the buildings. And we're hoping that by funding this in the short term, medium term, we can accumulate enough funds to start a new project within the next two or three years to get the district and the buildings in the shape that we need it for our staff and for our students. Back to Jeremy.
So where to vote? Greece has moved to one centralized voting location, which is here at the Transportation and Support Service Facility. Our polls open at six AM, close at nine PM. And to be eligible, voters must be registered with the Monroe County Board of Elections. In addition to that, I made a joke last week, of all things, we have new voting machines. I did have a chance to see them, and I was less nervous seeing the new machines. So New York State purchased a new secure electronic voting system. They are touchscreens, and they'll be used by Greece voters for the first time this May, May twentieth, for our budget vote. So instead of filling out, filling in bubbles, you select and review your choices directly on the machine before casting your vote. So we do plan to have some videos here to allow people some time to look through those as they, to become familiar with them before they go in to vote. In addition, this year, we'll have an increased number of vote inspectors here that will be able to assist people through that process now that we'll have close to twenty machines here. So we feel that we'll have enough support to help people through that new process. Early voting by mail. All registered voters are eligible to vote by mail. Those who wish to vote by mail must complete an application. Those applications are now available on the district website. So you could go there, download that, fill that out, mail those in, and then you'd be, and then once the application is verified, the voter will be mailed an official ballot, or you can pick one up in person at district office. So that, again, that application is now online and available. And so what's next? So tonight, the board will vote on the proposed budget. On April twenty-fifth, there will be a budget book available to the public. On April twenty-eighth, here at Transportation Center, will be Board Candidates Night at six PM in this room. If you can't make that event, it is live streamed, so log on like you're, some of you are doing now, and you'll be able to watch the Board Candidates Night. We have three candidates or three vacancies this year. May sixth is the official budget public hearing. And then we have two public information sessions for people to come and get some more information and ask questions. First one's May fourteenth at four o'clock here in this room. And then the following day at six o'clock, so we're trying to accommodate people's work schedules the best as we can by having one a little bit earlier in the, in the after, later in the afternoon, and then into the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Smalley. So next, we are going to be hearing about our Science Core instructional materials presentation. This is written information only.
Yes, and I would like to ask Ms. Kelly Flagler and Todd Smith to come up, please.
Good evening, everyone. We have been looking forward to this opportunity for some time now to share with you the incredibly thorough process and journey of how instructional materials are adopted for our children here in Greece. I've had the pleasure, over the past few months, of taking a deep dive into the recommendation process for core materials, always with the understanding of our current socio-political context, specifically how our community is increasingly interested in understanding how instructional materials are selected. As a result, it is our team's intention this evening to ensure that we are presenting to you a greater level of detail in comparison to what we might typically reserve for vertical teams and shared decision-making committees, because our hope is that you receive both the quantity and the quality of information needed in order to proceed with a high degree of confidence. Oh, you got me, Joe? Well, I'm just going to keep going. Joe will figure it out, he always does. So in a moment, there we go, look at that. In a moment, I'll actually heed my husband's advice and get to the point here and turn it over to Todd so that he can continue examining this. But first, I'd want to open to give you just a little scope of what you can expect during this presentation, as we take you through a journey from two thousand and thirteen leading up to tonight that begins with national standards, then the New York State's adoption of the Next Generation Science Standards, Greece policy, and then ultimately classroom instruction. You're going to hear a little bit about Board Policy eight-three-four-oh, the selection of core instructional materials in action. And you might recall, as a board, in two thousand and twenty-one, Policy eight-three-four-oh had undergone substantial revisions, and that was for two reasons. One was for coherence. So there were three policies around the selection of instructional materials. One was for classrooms, one was for library materials, and then digital resources. And in the spirit of coherence, we shifted to the current policy as it stands. The second reason for that substantial revision was to respond to the community's interest in ensuring a robust process for not only selection but also for reconsideration. Since two thousand and twenty-one, BOSI's has vetted and re-vetted as early as over the past few months. It's been reviewed by attorneys, and then our internal team has convened to reassess the efficacy in light of selection scenarios, text selection scenarios that have unfolded locally. Ultimately, the strength of the policy that our board has adopted is withstanding the proverbial test of time. So Todd's going to be taking you through what the policy actually looks like in action over many years, including the review cycle and teams of teachers vetting evidence-based instructional practices. Then we'll close by extending an invitation to the board to review the materials at district office prior to the May twenty-seventh meeting. We will be formally asking for your adoption. So without any further ado, our executive director, Todd Smith.
Thank you, Kelly. I'm going to try to be brief, but it won't be. No. So at the heart of that policy is really the Greece Program Review Cycle. So that encompasses not only the instructional material selection process, but a comprehensive examination of our curriculum, our instruction, our professional learning, what's happening in our classrooms across the district, across all content areas. So this cycle was developed in two thousand and seventeen, and I'm going to go just a little bit into each of the components. So in that evaluation phase, I really think about a deep dive of our current state. We get teams of teachers together to really look at, how are our students doing? We look at state data, we look at classroom data, screening data. We survey teachers. We do focus groups with teachers and students. We really get out to see, how are things going in our classrooms? How are kids learning? How are teachers implementing? To find out that current state. And from that, they make some research recommendations, some areas where we might need some improvement. And then we go and we spend a good amount of time researching evidence-based best practices. We go to conferences to learn, we go to other districts, reread books and journal articles to really find, what is the research showing us for the best practices in our content area right now for moving forward? And from that comes recommendations that might include piloting new resources, engaging in professional learning, training, writing new assessments or curriculum. So there could be a comprehensive review of recommendations. And as part of that often is a resource recommendation that may come to the board, as we are today with the science resource of New Visions. But there's lots of other recommendations that come out of that in terms of professional learning and curriculum and assessments. Then we spend a year developing and training our teachers. So we have comprehensive PD in our district through conference days, release days, after-school training, and then a ton of curriculum and assessment writing that often happens over the summers with teams of teachers. And then we go into a cycle of implementation. But even in those implementation years, we're constantly looking at data, getting feedback, and improving along the way. At the heart of all this work, though, is shared decision-making. So there's three key teams in our Greece Program Review Cycle, and the main core component is right there in the middle, it's those vertical teams. And those vertical teams are really teams of teachers. It might be a math vertical team or an art vertical team led by our curriculum leaders, many of whom are here tonight to support the budget. And those teams dig in and do the work I just shared from the previous slide, okay? They do all that research and make those recommendations and engage in training. But occasionally, they have to break off ad hoc groups. So if we have our larger math team, they might need, they might recommend, we need to do third-grade training or curriculum work, and so that ad hoc team will get off. And over the summer, they will do some curriculum work or assessment writing. And then at the top, you see that District Curriculum Council. So the District Curriculum Council meets a few times a year, and that consists of board members, parents, teachers, and administrators from across the district. And our curriculum leaders will present to the District Curriculum Council about the work they're doing and the progress that we're making, and get feedback from that District Curriculum Council, and that helps them make connections to different programs across the districts and different perspectives. So that's a little bit of what Greece does, right? That's our cycle that we're trying to engage in on a regular basis, but then you also have what the state tells us we have to do, right? So periodically, there's also new standards or new assessments or new guidance from the state. So for science, the last time we had new science standards was actually nineteen ninety-six, as you can see at the beginning of this chart. And then, as Kelly referred to, in two thousand and thirteen, New York State was part of a consortium of states that helped develop the next-gen science standards. But New York State, on its own, also had its own science team, and they looked at those standards and they made some revisions and edits. And in two thousand and sixteen, they adopted the New York State Science Standards. They're largely based upon the next-gen standards with some tweaks to make them for New York State, based upon feedback from teachers and the population here. And then New York State developed a five, six-year rollout plan of that, right? For training and awareness, and then gradual, grade-by-grade-level implementation. But that was also delayed by COVID. So you see a big gap there. Twenty sixteen, they were adopted. Just this last spring in two thousand and twenty-four were our first new assessments at fifth and eighth grade aligned to the new standards. And then we haven't even gotten to the new Regents' Exams yet, right? That's going to be happening over the next few years for that implementation. So a large time for that implementation of the new standards. So what is at the heart of the new standards? So at the heart of the new standards is this idea of three-dimensional learning. So there's three key aspects I'm going to spend just a minute here talking about. There is the disciplinary core ideas. That's the main content that normally we think about, like in biology, learning about cells, or in chemistry, learning about molecules, right? Or in earth science, learning about rocks and weather. But then there's the science and engineering practices, and that's how you apply. So you think about those problem-solving and critical thinking ideas of how are we applying the science that we've learned? And then there's the cross-cutting concepts. What are those connections to all of the content areas across the board? And those together create the experience that we are providing for our students, right? Making sure they're learning the content and engaging in those cross-curricular and applying those science to make them come to life for the students as they engage in that deep learning. So what is the Greece timeline, right? So the state had their timeline. What did that actually look like in Greece? So the state adopted the standards in two thousand and sixteen. In two thousand and seventeen, we formed our first science vertical team based upon our new program review cycle, and they developed a five-year plan for rolling out and adopting the standards here in Greece. So we started grade-level trainings, and those went on year after year. And then we started pilots at the K-eight level, and we continued to grow and build those pilots in two thousand and nineteen as we continued to train our teachers across the board. Then you can see in two thousand and twenty, at the K-five level, they adopted the BOSI's for Science Kits, which were really some of the first things that were aligned to the new standards. And then in two thousand and twenty-one, the state adjusted their timeline because of COVID, and so they pushed it back even further. But yet, we continued our work of piloting resources and training with our teachers. And then in two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, we, at the six-eight level, adopted Discovery Ed, and that actually came to the board here for approval in two thousand and twenty-one, I believe it was. So thank you for that. So I left high school off of that, because high school had a little bit different timeline, right? So the shift in Regents' Exams still has not happened for high school. That's coming up over these next few years. So high school kind of had their own timeline. As you can see here, in two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty, they did participate in that first vertical team, but it was really awareness building and some initial training and planning. And as you see along the way, the science team did present to the District Curriculum Council multiple times. You can see the first one there in May of two thousand and nineteen. And then in two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-two, the state, they shifted that timeline, but Greece kept moving forward. We did adopt at K-eight the new standards and started instructing them with our new resources, and Greece developed curriculum. Along this time, we also had a shift in science leadership, so there was quite a few changes in those COVID years. Adele Mater was our science director around that initial implementation, and when she left, Iowa's math director, and they allowed me to help out with science as well. And then in two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, so two years ago, we were coming out of COVID, right? K-eight's already adopted, so we decided to form a new high school vertical team. So we got teams of teachers from across the district to get together to really focus on high school. We surveyed teachers, and we really did deep dives into the standards, instructional shifts. We went to conferences and really did a lot of professional learning around, what were those evidence-based practices that were going to allow us to shift our instruction for these new standards and move us forward? So then last year, we continued some of that training through release days and after-school and our conference days, and the team anchored into the EQUIP rubric, which is a nationally-recognized rubric for evaluating resources. And after they dug into that, they started looking at all the resources out there, and there's lots of resources, right? Every day, I'm getting a new textbook in my office of, hey, buy this and use this. And so the team of teachers really dug into all of those and evaluated them based upon the training that they had and that EQUIP rubric that they were anchored into, and they chose New Visions as their pilot program. Then this last summer, Audra took over as our new science director and math director as well, and she supported the team last summer in training and curriculum work for the pilot, so that they were prepared this last fall to really kick off a new pilot for New Visions. The team also decided to pilot cognitie as well this winter. And after a deep pilot phase and a lot of collaboration amongst the teachers, they got together this March, they dug into the rubric and evaluated all the resources they had looked at, and the team of teachers selected New Visions as their core resource moving forward. So what was some of the feedback from teachers for why they selected New Visions? One, it's a hundred percent aligned to New York State. So New Visions was written for New York State. Most of the programs that we get are written for the nation as a whole. This was written for New York. And because of that, you can see there's connections to New York State. So when they're talking about the weather, or they're talking about like ice storms, they refer to the ice storm that happened in New York State. And so there's some of those strong connections for our kids. It's really anchored into that five-E model of science instruction, which is an evidence-based practice for science instruction that's been recognized for years. It's got thorough teacher guides to support our teachers, to make implementation a little bit easier. The teachers really like the labs and investigations and are excited about some new ideas to bring to their classrooms for engaging kids in those. And the other nice thing is, this is open source and it's free. So this does not cost anything for the district, other than printing things off. And so that also makes it adaptable, which is, which is nice. So we can adjust to our kids. Each year, as we look at data, we're going to continue to improve it, and that flexibility is there because of that open-source material. So what are some of our next steps? So the vertical team and the teams of teachers in biology and earth science are going to continue training this summer and throughout next year to get ready for implementation, because the new Regents' Exams are going to be next June for us, right? So a little more than a year away. This summer, that team of teachers for earth science and biology will develop the Greece curriculum documents. So teams from all the buildings will come together and work to develop assessments and curriculum guidance, and hopefully incorporate this new resource into those curriculum guidance. And then next year, Audra has planned a series of trainings to bring them together across the district and make sure we're collaborating and implementing well. And then you have chemistry and physics. That's actually a year delay, okay? From the state, the Regents' Exams, we're going to do them two years from now. And then finally, the cycle starts all over again. So K-five, we've been implementing for about five or six years now, so we're going to start the review process of that. We're going to look at, how are the, how is the resource going? What are the best instructional practices? We're going to look for overlap with our core, how can we be more efficient with our time and resources at the K-five level, and so it will begin again. I'm going to pass it back to Kelly now for some next steps as a district.
Thank you, Todd. So our hope tonight was to be able to shed some light onto the robust process that the district engages in over the course of many district engages in over the course of many, many years that's anchored into the board's policy. In terms of next steps, we want to make sure that each of you has an opportunity to take a look at the instructional resources at district office. And we wanted to provide you ample time to be able to do that. So on May 27th, we'll be asking for you to formally adopt our recommendation of new visions for the, for the instructional materials. Prior to that, we'll have a series of office hours where Todd, Audra, and I will be available to, if you'd like to come and collaborate and meet with us at district office. Or you can reach out and schedule a time independently that works for you at your convenience to see the materials. So with that, we want to turn it over and see if anybody has any questions.
Any questions? Mark? Want to kick it off?
Thank you for the presentation. I have a question that relates to the 5E model. Doing a little bit of reading aside here, I have a definition of that that describes it as a planning tool for inquiry teaching in science. And I know we've made this shift in literacy towards the science of learning. Science, excuse me, the science of reading, the science of learning more generally has clear focus on direct instruction, explicit instruction. So I'm wondering a couple of things. One, to what extent does the state direct us into an inquiry-based strategy? Or do we have our own latitude to, to select between one or the other or a mix, however that might be? And, and how do you, how do you characterize this? How do you see this as fitting into the science of learning generally?
Sure, I guess I'll, I'll start and toss it off to Todd, who does have a pretty strong and thorough understanding of the 5E model. To start with your question, it sounds like you're curious about the degree to which New York State dictates the instructional resources in addition to the pedagogical approaches that we take for instruction in the classroom. There are certainly standards that we are expected to make sure that we are addressing thoroughly. Within that, we want to make sure that teachers have some autonomy in ensuring that they understand where students are and that they understand the standards and are crafting instruction using the instructional materials that the board is recommending or that you're adopting for the core resource. It, it sounds like you're curious as well about inquiry-based instruction. It would be difficult to find any science class that has only direct instructional practices without any inquiry. So we do want students to engage in that curiosity cycle of examining phenomena, for example, in order to try to ascertain the nature of how things occur. So I think it's, we're not controlled by the New York State Department of Education in terms of the specific strategies and approaches that we, that we implement in the classroom. We certainly need to understand the best ways to meet our student needs. And we believe that the New Visions resource provides a framework that is aligned with the New York State adoption of the standards. In addition to the vetting process that it's gone through from the Greece Central School District teachers who've, who've piloted it, who've spent, you know, many, many years in terms of understanding Greece kids and instruction in this, in this district and have gone through a process to, to, to examine the efficacy of the curricular materials that we're, we're looking and exploring. And this is what they're recommending and, and we want to support them with that. I don't know, Todd, if you wanted to add anything to it?
I think you hit it pretty good, but I'll just add one thing. Certainly, as they're learning the content in science, there's explicit, direct instruction to support students in that. But at the heart of like a science lab and investigation and phenomena, we want students asking questions, which leads to some of the inquiry that's going to happen as well. So it's not one or the other. It's both need to happen to have a robust science program. Students need directed instruction to learn some content, but they also need to be asking questions and inquiring and those types of things.
So, so there is the backing, the support of the explicit instruction and the access to the labs, et cetera. It is a mix, is what you're saying.
It is. It's a balance of both things need to happen.
Yeah, I'll also add one of the things from this slide that was really appealing to our teachers. So it's an open source and adaptable resource, which means they're going to have the ability to be able to download the materials and edit them to make sure that they're meeting student needs. So I think that provides the opportunity to, to offer more explicit instruction when there's a need that would indicate that our students are needing it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mary?
I've been looking at this book that we received last, at the last meeting, and some of the findings were a little upsetting. We understand that what our scores have been compared to other school districts in the state or in the country. But when we look at internationally, things get much worse. And with the industrialized countries, I mean, we have been losing ground every year. And we have the smallest percentage of students scoring at the highest proficiency in math. And more than a third of the American high school graduates who enter college are required to take remedial courses at the cost of over $2 billion annually. And nearly four out of every five of those students had a high school grade point average of 3O or higher. And, and they talk about the kind of depth that students need to understand, especially mathematics and science, certainly literacy. And they described in one of the reform efforts, looking at the curriculums, they described our curriculum as being a mile wide and an inch deep. And I guess that's my concern. And when we looked at school improvement plans last, last year, a lot of them were based on this model of discover, discuss, and connect. And, and granted, science, of course, is a study and analyzing phenomenon, but it just seems like it has to really incorporate that explicit teaching and that skill development so that they have the knowledge to make sound decisions.
I don't hear a question, but did I cut you off? Go ahead.
No, that was just my concern, and I'm anxious to look at the materials too.
Yes, so I share with you an interest, and I think we all share with you an interest in, in desiring depth of understanding. And the text set that Mary is referring to is the Marzano and DeFour Leaders of Learning, which is anchored into the Professional Learning Community Cycle. So Todd, in his presentation, spoke at length to the PLC process and how our teams of teachers are collaborating to analyze student achievement data. And we're continuously refining that process through our school improvement work. And the hope is that through the implementation of the next generation science standards at the high school level and the adoption of the New Visions curriculum, that we would be able to go deeper in understanding through the, oftentimes, the hook, the inquiry-based hook, is through examining phenomena. But that is not the only way in which students are engaging with the content. They do have to have explicit instruction at times. And we believe that this material, these instructional materials will allow teachers the flexibility with also pure alignment to the next generation standards. And we will continuously participate in the Professional Learning Community Cycle in order to examine and study the impact that it's having, that our instructional resources and that our pedagogy is having on student achievement. And when we're noticing areas of need, we're going to continuously refine and examine.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hey, Mary. So Jeremy just said something that I thought might, 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 might make some sense in terms of further questions regarding being able to look at the materials. Mary, I see you nodding your head. And then, what, Mark, May 27th, I think you said? We could then again ask more detailed and informed questions. Thank you, Kelly. So Megan, you have something you wanted to say?
Just a quick comment. I, I wanted to thank you, Kelly, and actually Superintendent Smoline. We were talking about this back after executive session, just kind of, you know, clearing and talking about things, which we should be. To understand the depth, usually as a parent or as a board member, we have a very new board. There are five of us. And to kind of get the instruction that we kind of need to figure out things. If you were to look on the New York State science standards, we were talking about this. As a parent, you probably wouldn't understand what's going on. It's, it's kind of, I would say, in brow. And to have that understanding that you guys took the time to do that, which we've been asking for, that's greatly appreciated and giving us the time because we don't. And I think we have, as a society, we haven't gone through education and we have elapsed, like we were talking about, trying to get that triangle back, where the parents back in, partnering with them. The partners in progress that we were at Odyssey the other weeks ago. It was very, very interesting to hear that even the people that are in our schools, our staff members, to say that unless you're in this, you really just don't know. It's different when you're on the board. You have a different kind of scenario. And you're not a teacher, you have teacher things. And when you're not in it, so I appreciate it. It's, it's a lot to undertake and to, really, just to understand. So thank you for giving us the time on this. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Anybody else? Mark?
Yeah, so I, I do appreciate all, all of the assurances and the commitment to delivering both the explicit instruction and the opportunities for exploration. I want to just comment and a request. There was a research study, the efficacy of inquiry-based instruction in science, specifically geared towards science. This was a 2019 study that focused on six OECD countries that participated in the PISA 2015. It's for people out there listening, the Program for International Student Assessment. And the conclusion of the study was the analysis shows that students who reported experiencing high frequencies of inquiry strategies in their classroom consistently evidenced lower levels of scientific literacy. It was interesting, the study said there was higher engagement, but lower literacy of science, of, of lower science literacy. So they were more interested in it, but achieved less. So...
If I could just interrupt Mark for a second. This is something that we should discuss at a later date in terms of being able to get more information after we look that, look at that. So if we could put that off until the next few weeks?
I have a request that's going to be timely, I think, with regards to that, since we're going to be voting on May 27th. So the, I give you that as some, for me, anyway, background knowledge. And I'd like to know if you can share with us the evidence that supports this, this kind of approach. Maybe you have something from What Works Clearinghouse or other resources that you've used to analyze this, this proposed curriculum. So while we have an opportunity to investigate and review, come in and see the, the materials, that would be helpful. That's...
Great, thank you, Mark. And I think that you heard what he's requesting, and it looks like we have about three weeks to really dig into this. Thank you, thank you very much, Todd and Kelly.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so we will move on now to, and this will be a roll call vote. Can we get a motion to adopt the 2025, 2026 budget? Jordan, thank you, Jordan. And Mark, thank you. Any questions? Is that it? Is that it? Your hand raised? No, no questions. Mark?
Yes, Scott, let's go for it.
Yeah, I would just like to say thank you to all who have put together the budget. I know it's, it's a big commitment to, I think it was $136 million in instructional spending. I mentioned that prior, previously, that it's a big number and, and a big commitment for our community to, to our students and our staff. And I think that it's really important. I thank you for all the work that went into it. And I'm looking forward to casting a yes vote. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody else? Anything else? Okay, so it looks like we're ready to vote. It's a roll call vote. Let's start with Bill and...
My vote is yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
And Sean?
I'm a yes.
All right, thank you, everybody. Congratulations. I know that it's tricky when we don't have final numbers.
Now we're looking at 5.02, the property tax report card adoption. Can I have someone move that to the table, please? Bill, and thank you, Jordan, for seconding. Any questions? Okay, if, if you are a yes, please vote and raise your hands. All right, one, two, three. Oh, four, five, six, seven, eight. So that's a eight. Yes, yays. Okay, next one is the 503 Extra Classroom Activity Funds Quarterly Report. Could I get someone move that to the table, please? Bill and second, Jordan. And could we, any questions? Okay, let's do a vote.
Aye.
Four, five, six, seven, eight. Again, eight in, in favor. The next piece is the 505 Tax Cert, am I doing, yeah, Tax Certior, Cert, Certiori Settlement Refund. Could we bring that to the table, please? Megan and Jordan, thank you for seconding. And, okay, she's next, right? Or do we bring her up now? Now? Okay. Or is it down here? Yes, okay, so Tammy will be next. Can we get a vote on this, Sir Turch?
Aye.
Eight. I practiced that word. Okay. And next, 5.06, Tammy Flores. She is so willing to give her time to our audit committee, and she's going to come up and talk with us a little bit about the 506 acceptance of the 2425 Internal Audit Report Resolution. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for having me today. The Greece Central Audit Committee met on Monday, April 21st, and we're joined by Tom Zuber, representing our external auditor, Mangle Metzger Bar and Company, and Tim Doyle from our internal auditing firm, Bonadillo and Company. Tom discussed the approach to be used for our upcoming annual external audit, which includes reviewing several key areas, including management responsibilities, key controls, compliance, responsibilities regarding fraud risk and fund balance and reserves. He included details on a few GASP updates coming in June of 2025 and '26 that will require additional consideration for the upcoming audit. Tim went over their internal audit of the New York State Foundation aid, where they verify calculations used against what is on the state site, along with doing peer comparisons with several other comparable districts to ensure Greece is reporting all eligible items for state aid reimbursement. No material exceptions were noted with this audit. Only a few minor input miscalculations were identified, which have been corrected and could result in additional state aid within the fiscal year to ensure the district submits all aidable items. Also reviewed was the New York State Asbestos Hazard Emergency Response Act, or AHARA, audit and inspection conducted in November of 2024. Training requirements for a small group of seasonal staff was the only item noted, which was self-identified by the district before the audit began. Additionally, we reviewed the corrective action plan for the recent New York State Comptroller's audit regarding the procurement of professional services. Again, no material exceptions were noted, but a few observations were made within Again, no material exceptions were noted, but a few observations were made within this audit, including recommendations of enhanced training procedures, standardization of documenting the rationale behind certain RFPs, or utilization of piggybacking on some contracts, and conducting cost-benefit analysis for RFPs. The district is committed to implementing corrective measures to enhance compliance, transparency, and fiscal responsibility related to this process, and has added these items to the corrective action plan, which is reviewed at each audit meeting. The updates are already in process and including updating procurement policies, ensuring competition, training, and quarterly compliance reviews. The Audit Committee greatly appreciates the ongoing commitment, extensive time, and strong expertise of the staff at Greece Central in relation to the numerous laws and regulations school districts are required to abide by. It is our recommendation to approve and accept the 2024-25 internal audit report on New York State Foundation Aid and the district responses to the OSC audit report 2024-M-129 on the procurement of professional services. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Flores. It's good to see you. Could we have somebody move this to the, Mark? Thank you. And Bill, thank you for seconding your second. Let's, are questions or are we good to vote? Okay, let's take a vote.
Aye.
Okay, again, we have an eight vote. Thank you very much, everybody. So now we have the corrective action plan. Does Tammy speak to that too? Okay. So 507, acceptance of the 2425 corrective action plan, OSC audit. And could I get somebody to move that to the table, please? Bill, thank you. And Jordan, appreciate you. Let's take a vote.
Aye.
And again, we have another, Mary, I missed you. Okay, great. Thank you. And I got to remember you guys. So Sean and Todd, if you have a question, say it out loud so I can, because this is kind of like when I had to teach to the kids at home and to teach in the classroom, you got to remember where to look. 5.08, the quarterly reporting of professional service contracts greater than $50,000. Somebody bring this to the table, please. Sean, I mean, Bill and Mary, thank you, for the second. A vote. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Thank you, everybody. So this next, business information only, 6.01, budget and revenue status report. Any questions? Okay, thank you. And 6.02, quarterly reporting of service contracts greater than $20,000 but less than $50,000. Any questions regarding that? All right, good. The consent agenda, would somebody be willing to bring the consent agenda to the table, please? Mr. Stanzel and Ms. Farah, thank you. Okay, no questions. So let's take a vote. I wanted to thank some people for their, thank you, for their donations to the, to the school district. Arcadia High, a bunch of people, the production costs for the musicals into the woods, wrestling banners, soccer basketball banners, this came from the extra classroom donor fund. Athena High School, directions for the gala, card readers for the school musicals, boys' basketball championship posters, which is always a pretty cool thing for the kids, flag football banners. And then Odyssey, we have a donation from, and New York State Section 5, to support the girls' flag football program. And Patty Hill Charities Aid Foundation America to support programs at Patty Hill. Thank you for your generosity. So, right, do I have a motion? Would like to, no questions. Let's take a vote.
Aye.
And all eight of us. Thank you very much. We, okay, student trip approval. So we have a field trip coming up, and we need to vote to approve that. Any questions? Motion, please? Thank you, Mary. You have a question? Okay, and you want to bring it to the table? Can I...
No, I guess we bring it to, I'll bring it to the, make a motion to bring it to the table.
Yeah, I was just going backwards. Okay, so Mary, thank you. We have a second? Thank you, Bill. Questions? Mary?
Well, I just, I was delighted that they wanted to do something so wholesome. A few decades ago, I chaperoned a field trip to Montreal. It wasn't fun. So this, I think, is just a wonderful thing these kids want to do. That's all.
Anybody else? Comments? Questions? So I actually took a group of kids to Camp Corry before, and it was, it was exactly what you say. Kids are out in the woods, they're in the nature, and they're, it's a beautiful, it's a beautiful thing. So let's take a vote. Do we approve this field trip to Camp Corry? Okay.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Eight. Okay, so now we have action for the Board of Education. 10.01, the reorg meeting approval. Can somebody bring that to the table, please? Mary, and thank you, Megan, for seconding it. Any questions, concerns about those, that date? Okay, let's take a vote.
Aye.
Okay, that's eight of us. And then we have 10.02, 2025-2026, board meeting dates approval. Someone bring that to the table, please. Thank you, Jordan. Thank you, Mary. And any questions? Okay, let's take a vote.
Aye.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, eight. 10.03, 2025-2026, the Monroe-Orleans-Bosie's II budget vote. Somebody bring that to the table, please? Thank you, Mark. And thank you, Jordan, for seconding. And any questions? Okay, let's take a vote.
Aye.
Thank you. Eight, everybody. 10.04, the 2025-2026 Monroe-Orleans-Bosie's II board candidates vote. Someone bring that to the table, please. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Mark, for the second. Do we have any questions? Okay, let's take a vote. And we are good to go, eight of us. And I think we have reached your time to shine, Bill.
I didn't know under comments if there was anything, but if I'd like to adjourn this meeting, make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
Do we have a second? Thank you, Mark. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate your... What'd you say? Oh, yes, we do have to vote. Okay, Mark, because I thought we had to vote. Yes, we have to vote.
Aye.
All right, everybody. Thank you so much. Have a great night. Take care. Thank you.